Well, thank you for everyone coming to the meeting. And this is a special meeting of the council. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order it this time. The first item is public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Volz?
Good afternoon, council. For the record, Fred Volz was looking through the projects, both what was listed on the three-page summary on the website as support materials for today, and also the last iteration of this, which is the third edition dated October 8th. And I have a number of problems with the projects, some of the projects, and I also have some problems with the totaling of the numbers and the misallocation, which I'll try and detail as quickly as possible for you. Looking under the streets section for project 2102, $50,000 has not been allocated of the 200,000 planned. In project 2106, $500,000 has not been allocated among the years. In project 2107, it's $1.4 million off when you're totaling the numbers from left to right. The streetlight conversion to LEDs is off by $100,000. Going down to the general city facility improvements, 2103, it's showing a total project cost of $484, but only $334,000 has been allocated between the years. And moving on to the next page on my sheet, I would recommend that we delete the community and convention center project altogether, the $5.5 million. There's the Elaine K. Smith Center, there are three schools that can be rented, and there are any number of churches and other community facilities if somebody needs a meeting space. To be spending $5.5 million on this is totally unnecessary. On the City Shops main building renovation, which is 2105, there's $100,000 missing in the allocation. Similarly, in 2112, there's $100,000 missing in the allocation. Moving on down through into parks and recreation, we have $55,000 that hasn't been allocated among the years for the Veterans Park multi-purpose field new construction, which is 2102. 2103, there's a $100,000 gap for the LED field light replacement. I would recommend under the Boulder Creek Golf Course, 2102, that that be deleted altogether. It's unnecessary. Similarly, for 2110, and revise the Pavilion Foundation leak and carpet replacement to $30,000. That could be done much more economically by regrading and having a perimeter French drain installed to take the water away from the inside. I would recommend deleting altogether 2104 clubhouse entrance landscaping. It's unnecessary. We need to delete 2101 under the municipal golf course to spend $3,300 to remove mature trees and replace them with some sort of small specimen. Does not make sense, and again, we're short $70,000 in the allocation on that project. In 102 irrigation system design replacement, we're short $1 million in terms of allocation across the years. I would recommend that we delete the clubhouse renovation of $700,000. It's unnecessary, and those numbers also don't tie. They're short by $50,000. And moving along, under the fire department, 2104, I would recommend we delete that project altogether. We do not need a new multi-purpose public safety facility. And the municipal court, I would recommend deleting both of those projects. They're, again, not necessary. Under utilities, we have a $3.85 million gap on project 2101 and a $1.2 million gap on project 2104. Looking at utilities also in the water division, the first project 2101 is $100,000 short in terms of its allocation. The private cross connection control program, 2103, is short $200,000 in terms of allocating the money. 2104 water main replacement program is short $500,000 in terms of allocating money. Copper service replacement project is short $400,000. The El Dorado Valley Water Line, $250,000 short in terms of allocations. Under the sewer division, the sanitary sewer rehab, it's $100,000 short in terms of allocation. And the perimeter fencing for the landfill is $160,000 short in terms of allocation. Under vehicle equipment replacement, it's $395,000 short for the utilities, 2102. And I would recommend that, I'll save the rest of these comments for the end. Thank you, since my time is up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Sineikin?
My name is Neil Sineikin. We're very lucky to have Fred. Fred is very brilliant and really on point, and regrettably, we don't have that kind of background that he has. We have a council that's new. Mr. Adams is a musician by trade. You have a background in insurance. Dr. Claudia Bridges has her background. Tracy Folda has her background, but nobody has expertise on the council in finance. I have some background. I graduated in finance and accounting from Berkeley. I was in public accounting. I worked as a financial analyst for four years for a housing developer, and then went off on my own in multimillion-dollar syndications and structuring, so I have a little bit of background. I'll reserve most of my comments further along because I'm sure there'll be changes. I echo the concerns of Mr. Volz. Things I will point out that I'm concerned with off the bat, beside a lot of the errors that have been made, the 5% growth rate off the cuff without really any background or backup is disconcerting. The discrepancy between income on sewer and water, that gap is disconcerting. I don't, I think that the golf course, in my opinion, should stand alone and not be totally subsidized or to the degree that it is by the public. I think that should be looked at, at either boosting the revenue or making some other changes. There are a lot of things, but given that this is in flux, I'm just going to echo what Mr. Volz has said, even though that he's done all the heavy lifting and I'm just, you know, dovetailing on what he said, but it is upsetting. Given that the council was blindsided by Mr. Morris on the open meeting law thing the other day, and given they were blindsided on track 350 by Mr. Armentraud and not having a coherent proposal nor submitting the appraisal, given the 50 acres in the El Dorado Valley that I haven't seen Mr. Mays act on, given difficulties in police security, given other issues, I feel badly that as new people to the council that you have these issues with staff and now with a budget that so far is very lacking and disconcerting. If you're hiring special people to do the engineering, and you're going to look at doing either a special counsel legally to oversee the review of Mr. Niola's, Mrs. Crumbs' and Mr. Morris's contract, which I deem incredibly wise, and I'm very disappointed that that didn't go through the other night, I find that shortsighted, I would recommend that you bring in a consultant to assist you because of your not having this kind of background, unless you want to hire Mr. Volz if he's willing to, you know, to come forward on whatever remuneration he wishes. But I would see on a budget like this, spending a couple thousand dollars to bring in expertise to review the mathematical errors, to review the estimates, to review the structure, to review the uncertainties, to make sure that you understand it, I think on that kind of budget, on that, that would be very good money. That would be very good money spent, and then the public would have more comfort in knowing there's a review. There's an $87 million gap right now in this budget, and that, the way it's presented, doesn't make any sense at all. I would hate to see you agree that there's an $87 million shortfall when it's absurdly stated based on current budgeting where this should be spread over seven or eight or 10 years rather than lumped into five so you can distinguish between what's current and what's long-term, than have it appear in the paper, another hit article, that there's an $87 million gap in the budget when there really isn't. So these are my initial concerns, and I understand that this will play out over until November, I believe, but based on what I've seen, I'm, you know, more than disappointed again as I was on track 350, Mr. Morris's conflicts, and that you are very well-meaning people, and I'm glad to see you, but you certainly don't have the expertise to deal in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, seeing no others, we'll go ahead and close that. Madam City Clerk, I do note on the agenda, we don't have a process for approving the agenda or making changes.
You can. It says for possible action, review of the draft, but because it says action and this is a special meeting versus a workshop, you can give staff direction and take votes and take any action that relates to the capital improvement plan.
Okay. What I'm getting at is we don't need to go through the process then of approving the agenda, requesting changes, any of that type of thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. No. Only one item.
Okay. And we do have, Ms. Oliver is substituting for city attorney. I'm assuming it, no additional compensation, but, all right. Thank you. Okay. I will then open this up to staff. Mr. Latrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Latrell, the Public Works Director. Just wanted to highlight some of the things that's happened since our first workshop that we had on September 11th. We had a public workshop on September 25th. Unfortunately, there was only five people in attendance for that meeting, but we did have over 1,500 Facebook views of the meeting, so at least we're reaching out to some of the public. They just don't always have to be here. You've also received your rather large binder since that first meeting for the public's knowledge that's broken down into different funding sources by department, by year, so if any way you want to look it up, it is available in there. And then you can also, you'll see on the very last slide, you can look it up online at bcnv.org/cip, and that'll be up at the end of the slideshow. I do want to mention something from the public comment where there was the mention of funding shortfalls from the executive summary. If you'll notice, on the total project cost column, there's an asterisk by that, and if you go to page 18, at the end of all of the spreadsheets, the different categories, there's a note in red that says that that total project costs includes prior years because we want to be able to show you what the total project cost is for that project, not just what's coming up. So I'll jump into the slideshow. So as I'm sure we all know, capital improvement plan is a multi-year planning document used for the city to identify capital improvement projects and to coordinate our financing, and then also it allows us to structure our O&amp;M budget process in the spring by getting this tentatively adopted. It's an annually appropriated coinciding with the budget process, like I just said. The capital project is defined as a new replacement or improvement of infrastructure. That's building roads, parks, any of the infrastructure that we have, or vehicles, as we know that we recently approved the VERF fund for our vehicles, and it has a minimum cost of $25,000. So you'll notice in some of the other slides, I'm going to be more highlighting the changes from the first workshop, but there was a couple of them that dropped off that are just going to be O&amp;M projects because they were lower than $25,000. This is a list of different funding sources that we can use. The main one, at least it's near and dear to my heart, is RTC and the flood control. Public Works uses them extensively, but there's a number of other funds and sources that we use. Oh, a breakdown of some of the funding sources, how much we get from the different sources. General Fund, you'll see 4.4 million, electric, water, sewer. And then we got the surcharges for the golf course. I do want to mention that the Boulder Creek one is, hasn't been approved yet. We're anticipating bringing that forward for approval. The number being thrown out is about a dollar and a half for $2 per round, so that's just an anticipated number right there. And then we have the CIP 1, 2, 3, 4. Those are the voter-approved funding sources. And then, last but not least, RTC. This is same numbers, just in a pretty diagram. Sustainable funding. General Fund monies are from the unassigned fund balance or reserve. We're required to have a 20% fund balance that must be maintained for operating. Utility projects, we've adjusted those to match the utility funding. And then, as I mentioned on the previous one, previous slide, we have the voter-approved CIP 1, 2, 3, and 4. 4 is if, in fact, we do sell track 350, 10% goes to safety, and then the other 90% is to pay off capital debt. So breaking down the requests for just this next year, I know in the book, we have it called out for the next five years. That CIP is always planning out for five years, but what we're tentatively trying to approve is just for this next fiscal year. So on the streets, again, I just want to highlight some of the changes that have been made. The sidewalk hazard evaluation, that's been added in there for 50,000. RTC is funding that one. The streetlight conversion was in the last presentation, but it was listed somewhere else back in the public works section instead of streets. That's another RTC-funded one for $100,000, and they said they would continue. That'll be an ongoing project. Another addition would be the streetscape rehabilitation. That's basically going and fixing the landscaping along our streets, dead bushes, trying to get it more desert, desert native type bushes, plants, just updating everything. As you can see, and I'm sure everybody's aware, we have some rather cracked-up streets that need repair, but through RTC, we're going to be working on getting a good jump on that. And we did actually receive our pavement analysis. We're reviewing that right now, and then we'll be, bring that forward so you guys can review it with us. We'll show you what we're planning on doing, making sure we're all on the same page. Under Public Works, there's no changes on this page. That's the same things that were presented last time. And please stop me if you want to discuss any of the ones that we have listed there. No changes on this page either. Those are all ones that we had proposed last time. Some pictures of the different facilities and projects that we would like to implement. Now to parks and rec, as I had mentioned before, and you guys discussed at the first workshop, there was a $400,000 line item for a multi-use field. With your guys' feedback and discussion with staff and the city manager, we felt it was best to remove that project completely and then bring it back at a later time when it's driven by a community need. We don't see that need right this minute, so we're perfectly fine with removing that, but what we would like to do is implement this 128,000, or Veteran Park, Dog Park. This would go where Seespot Run is. Our estimate of 128,000 would be for irrigation. We'll start, we'd start with the grading, irrigation, sod, fence to extend it a little bit further. We want it to be long enough, big enough that people can still go out there and throw their ball as far as they need to throw it, and right now, we don't, we don't feel that's large enough.
Mr. Latrell, I just wanted to clarify something.
Yes.
You said where Seespot is run now, I'm assuming what you meant was in proximity to where it is. We're not talking about replacing or removing their facility.
No, we're not going to remove it. We're going to add to it.
Right.
So, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Next one on there is the LED conversion. That is a new one. Taking a step back, when we came forward with the first workshop, we had listed only the newly requested projects, and that's why you'll see a number of these parks ones that all call new, but some of them were in the CIP already, but we didn't list them if someone requested them last year, five years ago. We were only listing the newly requested ones, so some of these aren't new-new. It's just, I wanted to list all the ones that were requesting. So you'll see the LED conversion for ABC, the gym, the camera system. That, we're talking about at our security committee, because I know the police chiefs wanting cameras and better security, so we think it would be best to at least include that in the same conversation when the security committee, I can't say that, when the security committee is reviewing. And then another addition would be the bike route amenities and improvements. That'd be bike routes, water fountains, anything that can help improve the bike routes. The ABC parking lot resurfacing, it's in pretty bad shape right now. Our estimate of $200,000 to get that back in shape. And then there's a couple of projects that we had removed out of there. There was a recirculation pump, wet well, doesn't need to be happening right now, so we've pushed that out to fiscal year '24. The Oasis Park, we didn't have the funding for it, so we pushed that out a couple of years, hoping that we'll be able to have the funding in the future. Same thing for the Whalen Ball Field outfield. It needs new irrigation. The grass is getting pretty bad, so we've pushed that out a couple of years. We still want to do it, we just realized that we don't have the funding for it right No changes on this one. Still need to do the roof replacement, the filtration system, the surge trench. Boulder Creek, you'll see the first four, I'm calling them new, but they're not new. The equipment lease is just an ongoing one. We didn't have it listed the first time because it wasn't a new request. $90,000 for a new restroom, the PRV pressure-reducing valve. I know there was a question on that last time. Replacement of that and a sand bin.
Mr. Latrell, on the equipment lease, you said that was an ongoing cost?
Yes.
I'm curious why we would have that within the capital improvement then if it's an ongoing cost?
It's a three-year, three years?
Three years.
Three years?
Last of three years.
This is the last of three years. So it's an, the lease for the equipment, I guess I don't know how to explain why.
A lease to purchase?
Lease purchase. Sorry. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. For the Mirney Course, a couple of ongoing projects, the cottonwood tree removal and the irrigation system design. I know it was brought up before that there was a million-dollar shortfall on that. Well, we have $1 million in this fiscal year that we're working on the design, and the million and a half would be to continue the construction of it, sorry. Another addition to this would be the protection of the greens, the $30,000. And then we removed the utility carts with the new manager of the golf course. He's assessing the operation, and he felt that, between him and Roger, they felt that they didn't need it at this time. Pretty pictures. Fire Department, we don't have any changes on that. Same thing for PD. Those are the same three projects they were requesting from the get-go. Same thing for the VERF. It's still the 350 for utilities, 287 for the police, and 150,000 of that would be general fund, and then the remainder would be from, is it called MorCops? MorCops? Yeah. IT, I had wrote note changes, but Bryce, in his infinite wisdom, is already moving forward with the migration to office 365, so if that is implemented like it's said to be implemented this next weekend, then that one wouldn't be on there anymore for So for just general fund, this doesn't include, if you add up all the slides from before, it's not going to equal the 4.4 because of RTC and the other funding sources, but just general fund is the 4.4, which is a reduction of 300,000 from the last workshop. Electric, we don't have any changes. We'd still like to move forward with the same projects. Again, for the BC tap, that's a multi-year project. We have 3.85 in the budget right now. We're actually reviewing the proposals right now so we can move forward with trying to hire a contractor to construct that project, and then it would be completed in the following year.
I do have a question on that. It's shown there is BC tap to Buchanan. You know, there's another project involved with the BC tap.
Yep.
BC tap being a transformer.
Yep.
That transformer has already been purchased and is in place, but has not been connected to the system. At least the last time I was out there, it hadn't been. The project that was being done, tying into that, was the 69 KV loop system. I didn't see any reference to that. Is that part of this project or a different project?
Three different projects. Okay, so the 69 KV loop, that's under contract. The contractor has actually, they came out and they surveyed already, but they won't be starting construction, I believe it's next, next week?
Next week.
Yeah. They'll be starting next week. The poles are scheduled to be delivered, I believe, the second week in November, and, but they're going to go out and start pouring the concrete for the foundations. Then the BC tap to hook up the transformer is actually starting next week also. And then the one we have listed here, the BC tap to Buchanan overhead, will go from sub 3 down Buchanan and turns on Adams.
Down Adams.
Down.
Down Adams to Buchanan.
Down Adams to Buchanan. Yep.
Okay, so the funds that are being shown there, the 9 million, there was money previously allocated for the purchase of the transformer, for design work, for things like that. Is that part of that 9 million? Or that money that was budgeted before, I think the figure was around 5 million? Is that in addition to this?
Just, this BC tap to Buchanan one is about 9 million, 4.85. I can't recall what the BC tap to hook up the transformer, I don't know what the total cost of that was. Yep. You opening up?
Almost 2 million, just for the work at the BC.
Jim's saying almost 2 million for the work at the BC tap. So it's listed out, broken out into different projects.
Not, not that I could find, but that's why I asked. Thank you.
Yep. The only one that should be showing up in this CIP is for the one that we're planning on moving forward, but the other two have already been under contract, so they're not listed on this CIP.
Thank you.
Water, we had a couple of changes, just removing projects. Two of them, the reservoir vent, it's an O&amp;M cost, I think it was like $15,000, and then the fire hydrant painting, we're going to do that with O&amp;M, and then we also heard that we have some volunteer kids group. I don't know if it's the Boy Scouts or which group it was, but they want to help paint some of the fire hydrants, so that'll be removed from the CIP. And then the El Dorado PRVs, we know it needs to be done, but we don't know what year, so we just removed it from here, from this tentative approval. Wastewater, there was no changes. Same thing for the landfill, that's the same. And total for the utilities is just over 10 million, which that came down about 235,000 from the first workshop. And the studies that we've been mentioning for a while, water and sewer system evaluations, that hasn't started yet. They were working on the scope and fee for that. The power pole substation, reviewing a draft, a final draft of that one. The citywide facilities master plan, we actually received the final draft since the last time we met. We're reviewing that internally right now, and we're going to have a workshop once, we'll have to send all our comments back, and then they're going to come back for a workshop with the final plan. And then the pavement evaluation, like I said earlier, we are, we received the final for that.
If I can just interrupt that workshop, it's going to be with who?
We're going to meet... We're going to meet, just with us senior staff, the people that are involved, and then we want to present it to council. As I was saying about the pavement evaluation, we received the final, we're just reviewing it to make sure everything's matching up with what we know, and then we would like to start moving forward with implementing that. We actually took some of their, some of their suggestions from, before they finished their report, and implemented it for this fall's program. It's a much smaller program, like I've been saying for a few months, if we're going to get on a seven-year program, it's going to have to basically triple, so we can do the whole, do a whole circuit throughout the city every seven years. Listed some of our green projects by switching to LEDs, that's what the top two are. Renovation at the Muni Golf Course, so we can have a more efficient system, use less water. And then, and we're going to attempt to convert from the potable to the raw water system. Also, with the pool, putting in a new filtration system, the pool surge trench, that'll reduce water usage down there, in the meantime, while the ad hoc committee is reviewing the ideas, and before they come forward with a recommendation to you guys. And then, again, I would like to mention, this is the tentative approval, it won't be formally adopted by council until this spring, but by tentatively adopting this draft next month, yeah, November 12th, or whenever you guys choose to do so, that allows us to put together our O&amp;M budget, so we can present that to you guys in the spring. And as I said at the beginning, this is the website, if anybody in the public wants to get all the information we're talking about, they can download everything from your guys' binders, it's all broken out by tabs, it'll say what funding source, or what year, or what department, it's got everything listed there for them to take a look at. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I guess I'll, I guess I'll start here. So I kind of went through some of the different projects and made a little bit of a list, where most, some of it's looking for clarification, others, a little bit of question, if there's any item I bring up that anybody on council wants to jump in on, please do so. I don't want to hog all the time here. Project 2104, I didn't, I forgot to mark down exactly which, this one's, these are under, but this one's regarding ADA upgrades. I know that's not in the immediate future, obviously, but just out of curiosity, have we already identified potential needs for ADA upgrades that we need to see here in this community right now?
That's the streets one you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Actually, our crews are already going out and assessing, it's kind of in conjunction with the sidewalk one. We're going out and we're assessing where potentially we will need that. RTC is paying for that, we'll just have to do a funding agreement with them. So we're trying to get a game plan to know how much we want to request from them.
Gotcha. And then it does discuss a little bit, but just so that the community has a little bit of understanding, what types of improvements are we generally talking about that we'd be seeing?
We're more talking handicap ramps, crosswalks, I know it mentions in there pedestrian bridges and stuff like that, but that's just how RTC has it listed out, is that's basically what they would fund, but we're not looking at doing any bridges.
Okay. Project 2101, the city hall improvement?
Yes.
In there, it cites a city hall improvement study, based on the recommendations. I went through all the material that I've received, I couldn't come across it, if I did get it, perhaps I've misplaced it, but like I said, I have not gone through that study or seen it. It would be helpful if I did have that, so that I could, you know, better understand what it is we're talking about, and so that questions from the community come towards us, it would be helpful for me to have that.
Yeah, we were pushing hard to have that to you guys before, but that's what Al and I were just talking about, where we're doing, reviewing their final draft, we're providing comments back to them, they'll get us a final, and that's when we'll be bringing that forward.
Council member, on this particular project, again, what we're trying to do is put, you know, a number, because we know that as bare minimum, we can do nothing to the facility, and even though we know that currently city hall does need some significant upgrades in order to allow for handicapped accessibility, that sort of thing. So we're trying to put a space saver in there. If the council's druthers is not to plan for something, we just don't know what that is until that study is completed. We can certainly pull that number out, but just keep in mind that at, you know, some future date, once the council has finally approved and gone through the process of going through that facility study, that number will have to then be added in. So it either will be added in before the end of the fiscal year, or it may be, you know, the next cycle, you know, it will roll over. So even though it's a place saver, if you know, if, you know, we could see it that way, but until a project is actually identified and brought to the council for approval, we wouldn't move forward. So it's not, we're not saying we're going to spend a million dollars, we just don't know just yet. We're just putting a space saver in there, because we know that there's going to be some level of improvements that are going to be made at a minimum in this facility.
Okay, and then that kind of goes into the project 2104, I have the community room convention center. I'm assuming it says no site decided, obviously, we would wait for city hall, the facility study?
That would be in conjunction with the facility study. Again, keeping in mind that last fiscal year, the previous council had made some overtures about wanting to entertain some level of a community center that would allow for potential use for, you know, smaller convention, you know, executive teams, you know, type of thing, where there could be meeting spaces. But, you know, if it's not the council's, this current council's druthers to move forward with that, that's, you know, quite, you know, appropriate as well. Again, I think that the facility study may have addressed something along these lines, and so the council will be able to review that. If the council decides ultimately that that is not what, you know, the direction that you want to go, then that project would be removed out of the CIP, once you approve whatever that facility studies is going to be.
Okay, yeah, because, and I know I had mentioned this last time we discussed it, but when we are talking about community spaces, I think having the community's input should really be at the top priority. So I think as far as, you know, I just wanted to make sure that moving forward, this isn't something where, oh yeah, we're doing this, and then staff, you know, wants to move forward or put too much time or resources into this thing without, you know, having the proper process. As we already heard in public comment, you know, there are some questions as to whether we need it or not, so to me, making sure we have that community input is the most important.
I, excuse me, Mr. Adams, but since we're on this particular item, and we are voting on things, I'm assuming we can do these votes as items come up?
You know, certainly, I would say, you know, for sake of clarity, it might be best if, you know, you at least let us know, you know, which specific projects you do not, you want it on or to remove at this time.
Well, I would say since we're on this project now, then, if you don't mind, Mr. Adams, why don't we get input from all the council members with regard to this particular project? Anyone else have comments on this?
Can you clarify which project you're referring to? Sorry, you went back and forth on two.
I think we're talking about the $5 million convention center project that was being discussed anyway, at least previously, for the Boulder Creek area.
So the comments I have are same along the lines that we, we do have a lot of buildings, and we have some that are utilized a lot and some that are not. And, you know, I think, you know, we've been waiting on this facility study to kind of clarify what our needs and what we have, and what's being used, and what's, you know, been requested by nonprofits to be used. So I think there's a lot of things in the air right now that it's hard to make a determination, but I think that we have a lot of space right now available, that we wouldn't need additional convention center spaces. You know, we own, we own, you know, a tented area at the golf course, the Smith Center building, plus we use, you know, and work with a lot of our other communities, resources like our schools, if we needed a bigger, larger area, I think we have those available to us.
I have to agree on that. I know in the time I've lived here, I think there is one event that I've attended that required that, the kind of space that a convention center, and I know it was the Boulder Dam Credit Union anniversary. And I agree about the ongoing inventory of city buildings, and also the schools, and the Smith Center, and I'm concerned about having that money set as allocated at this point. I can see it being a long-term dream goal, but right now, to have that money allocated, that there are better projects that it could go to. If there was an, if I thought there was an ongoing demand for more convention space or a community center, I would certainly look into that, but I just don't see it right now.
And I would say, I think when we talk about these types of things, again, I recall when this came up last year, it was like, well, since it's a pipe dream, we'll go ahead and smoke that one and put 5 million out there, or 550, whatever it is. It just adds to this bewildering total that is not achievable within our budget. I think the comments have already been made, is whether this is essential to the community or not. I would certainly make a motion to remove that from the list altogether. If at some time in the future, there's a need for it, it could be put back on there. So I'll go ahead and make that motion now to remove that item from the CIP. Anyone wishing to second that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous to remove that item. Again, Mr. Adams, I apologize for the interruption, but we may as well finish that along.
No, no, please do, I encourage, if anything else, please jump in, like I said. Let's see, where was I? Project 2107, 108, the irrigation improvement in some of the parks, Broadman and I think Hemingway, I can't remember, didn't quite write it down. Have we already identified the irrigation system replacement that we, what we would be replacing the system with currently, or?
I don't know all the specifics of it, but yeah, they're already identifying better heads that are more water efficient. I know the piping is aging, and so it's just to provide more efficiency and less repairs.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, when we're talking about, you know, irrigation, and you know, we have to think, you know, lush green grass in the middle of the desert is a luxury. And, you know, certainly, you know, whether we can afford that right now, given the climate, that's for the community to decide, but, you know, as a governing body, we need to make sure that water conservation is the top priority, so that future generations can enjoy it. So I think if, you know, we're looking forward to doing things, projects like this, we really need to look, you know, a little bit of investment in upfront means, you know, less water use, less runoff, so we're saving money up, saving water upfront, which is a real need and a real resource here, and then also saving it down the line with not needing as much wastewater. So just having that be a top priority is certainly a concern of mine.
Yeah, I know Roger's mentioned it before about the golf courses, if you have a dead spot, you got to turn on the whole line. But by putting in more gate valves, you'll be able to isolate an area, and then the better heads, that's how you're going to save on that efficiency.
And then there's, you know, NDFM, there's other, you know, subsurface irrigation things that can be utilized, I know not everybody loves them for parks, but, you know, they can be potentially. Then, let's see, project 2117, the tourism improvements for Bootleg Canyon, it quotes in there, this project will provide the analysis for what improvements are necessary to take this tourist area for the next level. It then has a $250,000 tag to that, is that $250,000 for a study? Or is it $250,000 for potential improvements to that area?
Well, there's no funding for that, basically it's that new male lady skateboard.
Currently, there's no funding for that project, but basically, what we're going to do is apply to these, for AB84, I believe that provides some money in the near future, they say it's about two years out, two, and Bootleg Canyon funding would fall under that new bill. And so we're looking at, you know, how to better serve the public up at Bootleg Canyon, basically.
AB84, you said?
I believe.
If you remember council, in the last late session, the $200 million bond, there's a specific session in there that allows for grant funding, particular projects that allows for recreational and cultural type of, you know, grant funds to, you know, to design and study and potentially even fund part of those infrastructure improvements.
I would just like to make a comment on that. I want to be very careful about the approach that's taken there at Bootleg, and I think it would be a good idea to have that input now, before we get too far down the way on a project like that. When you say serve the public, what, what demand have you heard from the public regarding improvements that are necessary there at Bootleg Canyon?
Well, we have a large number of special events that we do on a regular basis, we have races, mud races in the detention basin, and just the parking requirements alone, the trails, the trash collection, you know, there's no trash cans up there, there's, I mean, it's a very primitive area, and we're, you know, having a lot of big special events up there, so a lot of people would like to see some improvements up there, improvements to the restroom facility up there, we have an antiquated restroom facility, and basically stuff like that, it's just very minimal improvements.
Okay, so when you say public then, we're talking about event promoters that are requesting additional services up there?
Well, we have a lot of people that live in Boulder City that ride the canyon on a regular basis, I hear from them, but I also hear from the people coming in on special events that, that are inquiring as well. So a combination of Boulder City residents and people coming to our great city.
Okay. You know, I hear from a lot of Boulder City residents too, that they don't want to see development up there, in that the primitive nature, the term that you use, is something that people appreciate and want to maintain. And I think that's important, that we listen to those folks as well. I understand that the event promoters come in and they say, you know, I can make a lot of money Boulder City, if you'll spend the taxpayers' money to do these things, I can make even more money off of this. I do know folks that ride up there regularly, I don't hear from them, particularly that they need additional parking or additional restroom facilities, that type of thing. I know, I've heard proposals in the past, that there would be campgrounds up there and, and things of that nature. I just want to be very careful about this, that the drivers of this aren't people who say, you know what, if the good people of Boulder City will spend a bunch of money, whether it's grant money or tax money, that they'll be able to make a lot of money off of that, and that's the reason we're doing these things. So I think it's really important that when we evaluate these projects, we look at it from the point of view of who's it benefiting, how much is it costing, and is it something that is really a priority for the residents of Boulder City?
And that's a very good statement there. The Bootleg Canyon is a very beautiful asset for Boulder City, and I love the primitive nature, we've tried really hard to keep it primitive. We've had a lot of requests to put mining rocks up there, you know, a couple of years ago, people wanted to mine rocks, we shut that down, we like it the way it is. But this is just to look at the possibility of increasing, you know, for the people up there, and for the residents of Boulder City.
Well, I'd just like to make sure though, that the focus is on the residents of Boulder City, and not so much how somebody can come in, organize events, make a lot of cash off of it, and leave us with the bill. That's what I'm concerned mostly about with something like this.
Mayor, if I may, just to answer the concerns that you do have, Parks and Rec Department is in the process of developing a final draft of a parks master plan, which will ultimately become the city council's policy directive as to how we go forward in managing parks and accessibility to, you know, all of our infrastructures that we have. And that would be a good place where we can certainly make sure that we identify different recreational areas, and what, you know, the expectation or the policy will be for how we manage those particular areas, whether that is a... we manage those particular areas, whether that is a park, a regional or large park such as Veterans, or if it's an athletic field complex, or if it's Bootleg Canyon. I do know and I'm aware, as probably many of you are, that there was a study done in Bootleg Canyon back in the early 2000s about, you know, expanding that to something else. And, you know, we can certainly do something along those lines where we can, you know, have that discussion about what do we want, if anything, at Bootleg Canyon, or where's that line that we do not want to cross? You know, and so this would be an opportunity both through either the Parks Master Plan that will be coming to council for consideration and ultimately adoption, because that will be the policy document that we will use to manage those facilities. And specifically, we could update the Bootleg Canyon Master Plan that was done early 2000s and make sure that that's very clear as to the direction of the council today.
Thank you.
Your word.
Any other comments on that?
Mayor, if I may, while we're on that subject, and you know, and I'm waiting, you know, for that Parks and Rec Master Plan, I'd like to see that, too, because a lot of these projects that we have include our Parks and Rec and keeping up our golf courses or our parks or other recreational areas. And I'd really like to see as part of that, a money figure, you know, I have no idea what it takes to water or landscape or maintain all those resources. And I know that, you know, we have, what, like 700 acres? Is that right, of Parks and Rec area?
Well, we have 17 parks. I don't know what the acreage is on that. We do have a breakdown somewhere. But we have 17 parks and we have over 100,000 square foot of recreation facilities that we manage.
So we have a lot of acreage that, you know, the city takes care of and, you know, the citizens, that's taxpayer money. So I'd really like to see, you know, money attached to that. You know, when we're talking about expanding or different uses for our parks, the recreation, to, you know, have a money, you know, a number attached to what does that take to expand? What does it take to maintain at this current time? Because that would really be helpful in making decisions for their uses.
Most Parks Master Plan have a service level that you would adopt as to, that's the policy of the council, that we maintain our facilities at a certain service level. And there's a number that's, you know, a dollar figure that's utilized that says it takes approximately, I'll just throw a number, I'd say $5 an acre to maintain it at this level. But if you want something a little less, it takes $4 or $3, and that would be inclusive of all utilities, maintenance, you know, grass cutting, that sort of thing. And that's something that will be included in the Parks Master Plan as well, because it does talk about, you know, what is the expectation or what's the policy of the council in terms of service level? Because it is an effort that it takes not only in dollars for utilities and maintenance, but also for staff to actually maintain those facilities.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to look at this from a different angle, and I'm not sure how, that doesn't fit in directly with capital improvement projects and budgeting. But looking at park district maintenance in terms of parks, green areas, bicycle paths, what is the net benefit to the city? I know there's a cost to the city, but it really, I don't know, how do we figure out how many tourists does that bring into town? You know, having certain green spaces, maintaining them as green spaces, maintaining bicycle trails, if you bring in a group of people for races or for events, are they going to our restaurants and our stores, and are they improving the overall economic benefit of the city? So it's hard for me sometimes to wrap my mind around just what the cost is, but is there a net benefit to them?
And, you know, obviously, we can't get down to the penny, but there is formulas that are utilized in the whole economic world, economic development world, formulas that they say for every dollar or, you know, every person that comes in, there's a certain economic benefit that travels through your system that, you know, equates to, you know, X dollars of benefit, which includes restaurants, hotels, you know, fast foods, you know, convenience stores, that sort of thing. And I would imagine we can probably ask our Economic Development Coordinator through the director to see how we can monetize that so that it is understandable that for every tourist, it brings in a potential of, you know, this range of economic impact in terms of dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to add to Councilwoman Bridges' comment there, because I think that's a very important question. We often see these things are being justified as, you know, meeting our strategic plan goals of economic development. And the example I would point to is our airport. You know, I've been told we have over 210,000 passengers a year that come through the airport. I would guess that there's not even 3% of those people that ever come into Boulder City proper. They may come back later. I mean, that's a possibility. But I'm very leery of these goals where, you know, LVCVA, I'm sure the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority has some very good numbers on if a passenger flies into Las Vegas, what the impact of that passenger being here for three days is. But I'm not sure that when we talk about these things, that that's an equivalency that we can assume. You know, many of these events, if we're talking about, well, they brought their food trucks in, they've got vendors out there, they've got all this stuff going, that means that our folks, our businesses, see zero. They don't get a benefit out of that. So I think when we come up with these formulas, we need to be very careful that we're talking apples and apples and not apples and, you know, mythical dollars. No, not even oranges, because that would still be a fruit. Something that's totally unrelated because it never happened. So I think that's an important distinction to make when we look at those formulas.
And I'll just make the observation that any large-scale event that I've ever seen that brings in all those sorts of things like food trucks, vendors, where it's kind of an all-in-one package where nobody has to go downtown, I still have a hard time getting seated at a restaurant during those events. So I think there is clearly an impact. I've never heard from any of the business owners that these events are bad for business. I've always heard that these help our business. So just food for thought. I think it's a hard place for the Parks and Rec Department to be in to be, you know, what is the value of a park? A park doesn't make money, but it does obviously serve the community. And so, yeah, it's how do we balance that and find that, strike the right note?
And much of that, and I will just remind the council, that, you know, you do get quarterly reports on visa expenditures that occur in this city from people outside the city. And that is, in essence, probably, I would suspect, where we would rely on in terms of a significant portion of, you know, that we would rely on, you know, what is that effect? Because those that travel and spend money from outside the city are coming here, driving through here, staying here, that sort of thing. So we can certainly come up with, I think, a very reasonable, logical formula, you know, that rests on some of the generic principles of economic development and how things multiply through the system, using our data as, you know, the variables that, you know, we would look at.
And it has been very helpful to get that data.
Yes.
But I don't believe it's even been a year that we've had the data. You know, you say, "We get quarterly reports." Yeah, all three of them so far. So it's gonna, that type of thing takes a little while to determine what's happening. And, you know, because somebody gets three or four more tables at lunch out of these events, and we're spending millions of dollars in infrastructure, that formula doesn't work very well for the taxpayers. Works great for a few people, because they have no investment in it, but it's not a great deal for the taxpayers. So when we say, "Well, our businesses are doing great and they love these events and all of that," we really have to look at the cost of that to the taxpayers and not say, "Well, you had a good lunch on Saturday because we had this big event." Again, there's easier ways to funnel money to businesses than doing that. So I just think we need to be very careful about it.
I think striking the balance is what we're all talking about. One of the last ones here, Project 2126 Tennis Courts at Vets Park. I noticed that in other areas where the project was kind of related to construction of the pool facility, it would note in there that, you know, based on the determination of the new pool, this project, you know, we may not do this project, or we may do this project, depending on what side it was on. Even though the reasoning for these tennis courts was down there was related to, you know, if we get a new pool, they could involve removing them, that language wasn't included, that it said, "This is really dependent on the construction of a new pool that would jeopardize the current tennis." So I would like to see language that kind of says that, just so it's clear that we're not going to develop tennis courts there regardless of what happens to those current tennis courts. So I'm fine, you know, it's a lot of money for tennis courts if nothing's happening to them. But, and then the last item on here is actually that I wrote down. It's actually not a project on here that I found listed in here, and it's an issue that a number of residents have come to me about, and that is lighting down at the skate park down at Veterans. I know I had mentioned it to some staff members. I'm not sure if any other residents have reached out to members of council, but essentially the problem is that once the sun goes down, we only have half of the skate park illuminated. You know, the way it's designed, it really is designed to be utilized for the full course of the park as they go through their routine, going back and forth, working on their skill. Once you kind of cut off half the use of that, you've really kind of cut off the use of almost the whole thing. As we move into the winter months, you know, those usable hours get cut down drastically. And then as we go into the summer months, where we have all the visibility in the world, unfortunately, we also have excessive heat. So really, that part of the park is only usable during early morning hours, and then that late evening where you're really being pushed right up against that sunset. So I just wanted to make sure that I voiced that concern, that a project like this is at least being considered, or I'm not sure where staff had, when I brought it up previously, if they had mulled over that anymore. And then I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that I have been receiving input on that particular issue.
First, want to say you're being generous that half of it's being lit right now. Yeah, Dennis' electrical division has already been putting together a quote. I don't remember the exact dollar amount. I believe it was right around $100,000, but it, the contractor actually put a light plan to it, so you can tell that the whole thing's being lit. But it would require bringing new power over there, setting new poles, so it would be fully illuminated.
And just based on the other figures we've seen in here for lighting, we're probably talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for a project like that?
I believe it was right around 100, but I'll find out and get back to you guys.
Because I, too, have received some input from the community on that, and that was that the lights would be on all night long, because, you know, it's better that the kids would be there than somewhere else. But I do think we still have curfew laws here in town. And again, I know that. I know it's like, hey, man, I just love my skateboard, so I want to be out there till 3:00 in the morning, but maybe that's not the best use of our tax dollars either, so.
Yeah, what I've found is best is you put them on a timer, where you just spin it like you would for a fan in some of the bathrooms, and it just tick, 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 and it turns off after a half an hour or an hour or whatever. Or we could set it up on a timer at 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, whenever the park closes, that's when the lights turn off.
That may be the better option on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I will say that I know other parks in the valley have that, both that timer and the shut-off, so, you know, you can have both options, so that it's not, if it's not being used, kids don't have to use the timer, we're saving energy, and then when it is being used, then you can use it, and then, you know, then we know there's kids there also. So I guess they're not all kids, or some of them are my age, too, so. That's about everything that I said, but I just wanted to make sure. So we are looking into that issue?
Yeah, they already got a quote for it, and like I said, I can't remember the exact dollar amount. I think it was right around $100,000, but I'll look up that number and get it for you.
Thank you. And then I will hand it over to council.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I just have one question. I found most of the numbers self-explanatory, but I was just curious what the reason for demolishing the safe nest building is. It looks like it's funded in 2024 for $100,000, and it's that, I know it's that portable-type building behind the courthouse.
Yeah.
And it is used, and I was just curious if that was a result of city-owned building inventory, if there was a specific strategy.
I know that was a part of the facility study, but I don't recall that being the final outcome of it. So I don't know where this originally came from. Maybe that's what was determined in the past, and it's just been rolling over year after year. But that facility study is, part of that is determining, okay, you got the safe nest building, what's the best use for it? Is it to remain the same, or is it to get somebody else in there, move safe nest to a better building, or is it to get rid of the building?
Okay, I was just curious why that demolition would be on the capital improvement plan and already budgeted for a year, specific year?
That I don't have an answer for.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have an answer?
Well, should we go ahead and remove it until we do have an explanation, or?
Yeah, when we do, as Al is saying, when we come back with the facility study and we provide all the information, that's when those decisions can be made, if that's what you want.
Well, this project's a few years out, as the councilwoman pointed out. You know, I'd be happy to make a motion, remove it from this CIP if it's justified and it comes back later. We can look at it then, but rather than leaving something on there we're not certain of and the fact that it's years out, I'll go ahead and make a motion, remove this from the CIP.
And I will second that.
All in favor? Any other discussion? All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I?
Councilwoman Folda?
So when this meeting was originally scheduled, I wasn't going to be able to attend, and so I did send questions into staff. Those questions were given to council, and they are available to the public, they're on the table here. So I did ask a lot of questions. That's why I'm not talking a lot today, is because I did send about two or three pages of questions that are available there, if anyone wants to read them. So most of mine have been answered, but just wanted to just reinstate that, you know, we do have a security committee, a utility rate study, a facility study, Parks and Rec Master Plan. There's a lot of moving parts right now, so it's, you know, it is difficult to make a lot of decisions on what should be kept or removed at this point. There are some things I probably would like to see removed, and then they're on my list there, but we really can't decide on that until we see, you know, further what's planning, you know, what's the plan with Parks and Rec, or what's the plan with the facilities. But the security camera, there's about, there's three different, there's a portable camera and two different line items for, under Park and Rec cameras, and the police for cameras. And so I just wanted to reiterate that, how many of those are being placed and to what purpose? Because each time a camera is added, it also added someone watching or recording or storing that information. And we really need to look at the overall goals of having additional cameras and whether it's going to cost us more to maintain them or than the worth of the assets that they're protecting. So, and the point that, you know, cameras are also very retroactive, you don't, they're not really proactive, and that's only really reliable if you can have good conditions and be able to make facial recognition. So really, when we're putting a lot of the money into these cameras, or, you know, they're on the plan to be used, to consider those things. And then there was a future one that was under Parks and Rec, which was the Park 2117. And I would like to have the Historic Preservation Committee to review those things, which were park, their bike racks and things like that, that are going to be in downtown in the future.
Yeah, that can definitely happen.
Okay.
All right, I have some notes here as well. Just a general impression is, you know, this certainly is a much better formulation of a capital improvement, capital improvement project list than we've had in the past. I think I had mentioned it at the last meeting that, and this goes back several years ago before you folks-- before you folks were here. Um, there was some kind of cut and paste Excel sheet, no column headings distributed to the public. And it was like, it, had that been my work, I would have expected to at least gotten a severe reprimand for that. But, uh, this has come a long way, so I compliment staff on doing that. Um, the, the question I have though is we have so many projects on here, uh, it literally boggles my mind when I look at what our budgets are and what our available funds are. Uh, I'm looking at page 25 of the packet, uh, the unfunded amount. So everything else is supposed to be funded, but the unfunded amount is over eighty-seven million dollars. And we have a budget of thirty-four million dollars that we pay everybody salaries out of, buy equipment, do those types of things. So I, I'm not sure that we're being realistic when we put this together. You know, it's nice to have a wish list, but, uh, clearly we do not have the money to accomplish what's on this project list. So that, that's a concern of mine. Uh, also the fact that it doesn't seem to be prioritized and I, I think that's critical. You know, some of the other council members have already mentioned that, uh, there are studies out there that we're waiting on, that they're not finished yet. Uh, I think that's critical to understanding, well, what is it we should be approving and not approving? So without having these things, uh, it makes it very difficult on me. I won't speak for the other council members, but it makes it very difficult on me to evaluate if I'm looking at this project versus that project, uh, which one do you keep and which one do you say that's going to have to be put off? Uh, or which ones get scaled back and, and which ones go forth at the amounts that are being estimated? So that, that's a real concern of mine that, um, this is just not realistic as far as the amount of money we have. And, and I did read the preamble, I understand that, you know, a lot of these things are things, well, we'll hope to be able to do them in the future. Uh, I, I think it's fair to the public if we stick with what's reasonable and not what somebody thinks might be a good idea sometime in the future. So while I think this is an outstanding job, I think we need to really look hard at what's on the list. We need those studies to be able to evaluate it and some type of priority to say, you know, if you don't do this project, uh, you're going to run into a real problem. Whereas that project over there, well, we never had it before, it's a nice to have kind of thing, but it's not critical to the survival of Boulder City. Uh, maybe that doesn't need to be on the list. Uh, it had been mentioned in public comment that, uh, there were some things that don't add up. Um, I certainly found that on page 13 of the packet, which is in the executive summary. Um, just looking at the, uh, range of the, uh, funds, for one thing, we go from a high of thirty-two million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, to a low of one point four million dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. And I understand twenty-five's out there and hopefully by the time we get there, everything will be fixed and we'll have almost nothing we need to spend money on. Uh, my guess is we'll find some things along the way that we haven't thought of yet. Uh, but a, again, when I look at that and then I look at the way the totals are done, uh, it simply didn't add up. Uh, the amounts that were being forecast for the different fiscal years, as you get down to the totals, uh, it just doesn't add up. Um, yeah, the Stan Tech study, again, I think that's critical. Uh, I'm sure it's coming. I know it's been promised. Maybe by Christmas we'll have it.
We're sure.
Well, maybe before we're supposed to approve this, we'll have it. Because again, I, I feel it's a critical document for us. Um, another thing that I didn't find, and I may have missed something in the three hundred and twenty-six pages here, I don't know what the current balances in the, uh, capital improvement funds for the general fund or the utility fund is. I didn't find that number in the documents. And the reason that I feel that might have some relevance is when we go and approve projects, we might want to know if we have the money in the bank to pay for it or not. Um, another issue with regard to those balances, and I know I've spoken with, uh, the finance director about this, when we look at how much money we have coming in, how much of that overall revenue is going back into these reserves? And the reason I feel that's critical, again, I've spoken with the finance director about this before, uh, if we say, well, okay, we're going to go ahead and spend nine million dollars this year. Uh, first off, I don't know if we have nine million dollars in the bank, so I am a little hesitant to commit to that. Uh, and secondly, if we spend nine million this year, uh, do we have anything left going forward? How much comes back into that during the year? So are we making nine million dollars a year for the reserve fund? Uh, or are we deficit spending? So we have some total in that reserve fund and we're actually reducing it each year without having the revenue necessary to replenish the fund. Um, at some point you run out of money and you probably run out at the time when you really need it for some important project. So without having that information, I also feel it's very difficult to do these evaluations. Uh, I'd like to know what has actually been spent out of these, uh, funds over the past three years so we can get some idea. Are we, uh, blowing the budget or are we staying on an even keel? Uh, how is that going? Uh, the distribution of funds from the sale of track three forty-nine, uh, we did just do a second sale of that not too long ago, uh, or excuse me, a sale of the second portion of that. Um, is that money still in the bank? And if it is, I, I think that that was voter approved to pay for infrastructure debt. Is that?
Utility infrastructure.
So are we applying it to that? Uh, we're getting ready to refinance utility infrastructure debt with the raw water line? Can we pay down the principal on that since we have a chunk of money right now or?
We can't do it if we want to refund it the way, the way it was presented. We have to wait two years.
Oh, the June twenty twenty-two?
June of twenty twenty-two.
Well, what I'm saying is we're going to pay off some debt by getting a new loan. So can we reduce the amount of the new loan if we pay off in cash, uh, from the sale of, of track three forty-nine land, the existing principal and then borrow less?
We can use that, but we have, we're not, we have to honor what the proposal is at this time. And what we did discuss, I believe at some council briefings, was that the money that we can earn, if we have this, this pot of money that we want to use to pay this principal down, we can invest it for two years and make more than what the, the interest rate will cost us during that period of time. That was discussed during the briefings.
Yes, and I'm always hesitant about how we're going to make money by spending money.
This is the money that we're saying we're going to use to pay down the principal. And part of the good interest rate we had, or we were offered is to allow two-year, a two-year period before we can pay down on principal.
Well, I understand that.
Once that two years is done, we can pay it all off at once if we want to.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, if we have money that we say we're going to use in two years, we can earn money on that.
And I appreciate that. Uh, and I, I think, you know, I appreciate you making that clarification. Um, when that land was sold, and by the way, it, it took a couple of times for that to happen because the residents of Boulder City don't like selling land. Uh, it's not something they're eager to do. So they were fed the story that, well, if you do this, we'll pay off this debt that you didn't want either, but that was incurred. Um, so when we say something, and, and it's not this council saying it, it's previous councils that have said it, that if you let us sell this land, we will take that money and pay off, uh, utility infrastructure debt.
This is the, the proposal for track three fifty, which has not been sold yet.
Well, I, I thought the three forty-nine.
No. The way the question was worded, that a yes vote would allow the city to sell the twenty-nine acres of city-owned land and expend the proceeds of the land sale for the purpose of making much-needed repairs and improvements to the city's utility infrastructure.
Well, we can make repairs and improvements, except we're in the hole right now and that's why we raise people's rates, so.
That's correct, because we didn't have any money in the utility fund at the time for capital, so we had to identify a different funding source to pay because the rates did not cover the capital improvements in the utility fund.
Yeah, thank you. I still like paying off debt. I'm just one of those people that doesn't care for debt. So we'll move on. Um, but again, thank you. I think that's a good conversation, not just for this council, but for the public to understand what it is happening with that money. Um, there was also voter approval to take up to a million dollars a year out of the capital improvement fund. Uh, I believe that was also supposed to go for utility infrastructure.
On page six of the executive summary, it breaks out the, uh, CIP, the four CIP approvals of the voters.
Yes, and number one talks about a million?
Yes, for city, for city facilities.
And infrastructure.
Okay.
And then?
So like capital improvement type things?
Yes.
Okay.
Like a roof on city hall or when we did the bricks outside, stuff like that.
Right. Um, and I believe there's an expiration date on that, is there? Nope? Okay.
Number two.
Uh, and then what is the expiration date on number two then?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we're coming to the end of that approval.
Yep.
Again, I'm, I'm trying to do this for everybody's clarification here. Um, the vehicle equipment replacement fund, at least the figures that I saw, it doesn't look like there's enough money in there this year, um, to pay for the items that are requested out of that. So it looks like there's a shortfall in that fund.
When the, uh, council approved us creating the VERA fund, they approved us funding it. So that's a change from the, from this information.
Okay, so something has changed in between?
That'll be a, uh, an amendment further on the year.
Okay, thank you.
And also I just want to make sure that we clarify, the vehicle replacements that occurring, um, in this current year, um, includes vehicles that are actually being paid, uh, not just from the general fund, but also from, uh, the more cops as well, correct? Thank you.
Okay, and I, I think, I appreciate that because I don't, the way the figures were expressed, I don't think that, uh, shows that money from the more cops tax as being part of that.
And I think if you, in one of the slides up there, when it talks specifically about vehicles, there was a little asterisk, um, where public safety, it specifically was the vehicles, uh, for police, uh, part of the vehicles were being paid for out of the more cops and the other part, I think was going to be paid for out of the general fund. Is that, I'm looking at, at commander over there and make sure that I'm speaking correctly.
I believe it was all.
Need to get to the.
There's a hundred and fifty thousand of the two eighty-seven.
Okay.
Um, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand is more cops, a hundred and fifty thousand is general fund.
Thank you.
That's what the asterisk was meaning and we could have been more clear on that.
And I just wanted to let you know, I didn't add up all the numbers in here, but.
What? Why not?
A few that I picked out.
It was only three hundred pages.
If I had a question, then I ask the question. But I, again, thank you for the clarification on that. Um, another issue I brought up in the past, you know, we're very fortunate here in little Boulder City to have our big brother over there on the other side of the hill, uh, that has an RTC, that, uh, yes, we pay our gasoline taxes that go into that as well, but they make money available, not just to us, of course, but to do large projects. Um, you know, I recently had someone comment to me about the traffic at Adams and Buchanan, the four-way stop there at Adams and Buchanan. And I said, well, we're getting ready to design a project. No, don't do that. Absolutely don't, don't, don't do the roundabout thing.
Did you say roundabout?
I didn't say anything.
I, I got the picture. It's not a good picture. Um, the project, I said, well, the RTC is going to fund a project at Adams and Veterans. And they're like, well, where's the traffic? Well, yeah, I think the person had a point. And of course, we have a lot of folks that feel that, you know, if they jam their brakes on and get the nose of the car to really dip down, that counts as a stop so that somebody who is stopped and starts to go has to wait for them. Uh, so there's a little driver etiquette issue there. Um, the lights around the stop signs at Wyoming and Nevada Way, I think have been helpful. I don't know how expensive those are, but, you know, maybe at some of our other major intersections, something like that might help. But I know RTC has already approved the Adams and Veterans study. Uh, maybe we ought to look at, you know, I, I don't think we need an official traffic study, but we probably ought to look at where we do have traffic here in Boulder City and where those types of improvements might be necessary.
As part of the agreement, we have right now with RTC for the traffic study at Adams and Vets and also, um, in town here, I don't think it would take much to get an amendment with RTC to at least look at Adams and Buchanan.
Adams and Buchanan?
Yep.
Yeah, it, you know, again, that is one of our major intersections that there seems to always be traffic there when I'm using it.
Mm-huh.
Um, in our last meeting, I had asked for an income statement, uh, about the golf courses, in other words, how much revenue they're generating. We have an awful lot of projects on the CIP list here, uh, expansion of dining room, uh, several things like that. Uh, I'm not sure of, of how that contract, I don't recall exactly how that contract was worded, uh, but there's a four hundred thousand dollar expansion of the dining room down there. I understand that may be of benefit to the leasing, but I want to make sure that when we're spending money on the golf courses, if there's something that is being strictly done for the benefit of the leasing, uh, we need to look to the leasing to say, if this is going to benefit you financially, uh, then you need to be involved in the financing of the project rather than just having the taxpayers do it. So I think that's critical when we look at those types of, uh, projects at those golf courses. Uh, we're not, again, asking either the, uh, people who play golf or the taxpayers of Boulder City, uh, to do improvements that are benefiting a business, a specific business in that case. Um, something I brought up before is looking to do more with solar power generation around town. There are a few projects on here for shade structures around town. Uh, we have an example across the way here of where a company had donated the panels to us. Um, I would like to see more of that type of thing occur. It's kind of a thing here in Boulder City, the whole solar energy, you know, in case that hasn't become clear to all of us yet. Uh, but, you know, in, in all seriousness, I think we need to look at those things. From my talking with folks, uh, the amount of money that it costs to do those things and the payoff that you get over the years, uh, those economics have been, have become very advantageous. You know, when the, uh, amount of energy that you were getting, the cost of the panels and all that, that wasn't always the case. Uh, but from what they all tell me now, it's actually cheaper to get solar power than any other type of power. And if we're doing a project anyway and the costs are similar, I, I think that's something we really need to look at.
Excuse me, Mayor. Brock, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Brock's already started, at least started those conversations with some of the solar companies.
Yeah, Technosolar will be constructing a couple shade structures.
Microphone please. Sorry, I know better. Uh, Technosolar is actually under contr, or required under their lease to construct a couple solar shade structures throughout the community. Yeah, and, and again, I appreciate you working on that, Mr. Arman Trout. I, I think that's great and I know the companies have said that, you know, they look to be good partners with us. Uh, but even if we don't get things from them, I think we need to look at that type of thing. You know, when we talked about these types of projects eight or 10 years ago, the cost of panels, uh, may not have been advantageous, but from what I'm being told, the cost of those panels now, um, have become very inexpensive compared to other building materials. So I think we need to look at that as a city, but again, thanks. materials. So I think we need to look at that as a city, but again, thank you, Mr. Armond Trout, for making that part of the negotiations.
Can I just add one on that? Because I think it's also important with what the mayor's talking about, is that we're not talking about just getting shade structures with potential solar, but, you know, any new construction, any new facility, looking into how we could utilize solar energy, I think, would just be very advantageous to us. So it's, you know, not just, "Here, we can put something new up here, put something new up there," but any future project, that we really look at different ways with which we can utilize that energy. Continue.
Thank you. The irrigation projects, the lighting projects, you know, they certainly on the surface look like to be excellent ideas. I think the Muni course was built 40 years ago.
1970.
Yeah, 1970.
Yeah, the first nine holes was 1970, and then we put the second nine in 1984.
So, as much as I hate to admit it, things may have changed over that period of time, but...
Yes, they have.
Okay. And so I get that, but I would like to try and get some idea, again, because these are expensive projects. You know, what's the payoff? What's the ROC, the return on capital? You know, are we spending a lot of money to not get a return? Could we say, "You know what, when it breaks, then we'll put the new stuff in"? I'm just concerned that we don't use that as, "Well, we'll save money." Well, how much money can we save? And I certainly get a lot of comments from the public regarding the lighting. People like seeing the stars. It's one reason why people live out in a small community. So as we do these light replacements, is there something that can be done? There's a whole thing called the Dark Skies Initiative. You know, are there things we can do to enhance that without a great deal of expense? In other words, if we're doing one project anyway, can we fold something else in that would be beneficial for something like that? I think that's a lot more important to folks than we may realize, because I do hear that from a lot of different people. So I hope we're looking at that as we're doing these Councilman Adams had mentioned before the tennis courts. I think we need to look at usage on any of these projects. The high school also added, I think, four new courts over there. I've talked about this at our other workshops. We've always had a strong tradition here in Boulder City of sharing our resources with our schools. You know, that grew out of the fact that when Boulder City was a Federal Reserve, the schools in the city were the same thing. I want to make sure that we're not adding a lot of infrastructure that the CCSD has already paid for, because it comes from the taxpayers. And if we're adding new facilities, after the high school has just added some, or even Garrett may have existing facilities, I really think we need to look at partnering with the school district whenever we can, so that we're not double-charging the taxpayers for these facilities. You know, that's an issue in the valley. I know I've heard several Clark County commissioners make that comment, that they don't appreciate having a school sitting in one place and hearing from their residents that they have to build a park, you know, within a half-mile of that school, that already has a lot of recreational facilities available. I understand it's CCSD, and it's the governing bodies, but the taxpayers are still going, "Why are you charging me for two of these things?" And plus, I believe that the school administrators here in Boulder City are probably willing to work with us, just the way we've been working with them for many, many years.
It's my understanding, I think part of the reasoning for the request from the city is, it's my understanding, although we have a very good working relationship with the local schools, that any time any of their facility is used, it requires an administrator to be on duty at that facility.
I think, and I appreciate that. I know I've heard that type of concern. I'm not sure that they're standing as pat on that policy anymore, because the Clark County commissioners have made it pretty clear that they would like to see these facilities opened up. So let's have the discussion with them. If not, if not, then that's up to a body like this city council, to go to the school district trustees and say, "We don't appreciate having to double-charge our taxpayers for facilities." That's a political policy decision that gets made. So if that's the case, then if we need to have that discussion, we should be having that discussion, and not telling the taxpayers, "Well, you know, the school district has a policy." But I do appreciate your input on it.
I'd like to make a comment on that, if I can. We lived in Scottsdale for 10 years, and the local high school was also the utility billing office. And a lot of the city administrative functions, where there was interaction with the community, was at the high school. In fact, a library was at the high school, the public library was at the high school. And I was wondering why in that community like that, something like that gets to work, which certainly reduces the costs to the city, versus why we're not doing that here.
So, Mayor and Council, I will just reiterate that there is more modern practices that are evolving throughout the nation on public-public partnerships, which is exactly what the mayor is talking about, where a public entity such as a school district does partner with, say, municipal government. Oftentimes, what will happen is that in the master planning of a community is, you know, communities grow, which is not necessarily here in Boulder City, but they would set aside acreage. Acreage would include a school, and public facilities or parks and whatnot, that would be jointly utilized by both the school, in terms of providing athletic fields and whatnot. And then, when the school's not open, then those facilities are then available to the public. So during school hours, they would be restricted just for the school use, but then, you know, nights and weekends, it would be available to the public. So that particular, you know, practice is out there, and it is done. And I'm looking to my community development director, because I think this is part of the whole planning process, and how we zone things, and, you know, we get together with the school district. So it wouldn't necessarily be in agreement with the local schools here. We would have to go to the central office and, you know, have those agreements drafted. I will tell you that with the previous administrator at the schools, we did have somewhat of a general discussion about how we would do that, including as they were looking at their budgets being diminished, particularly in operations and maintenance arena, as far as maintenance of their facilities, you know, the outside facilities, athletic fields and whatnot, you know, that how the city might be able to assist. So if we were to assist in maintaining certain fields, you know, with the district, not necessarily the school here, but the district, you know, then open that up for community use on the weekends and whatnot. That discussion really didn't go much further than that, and I'm not sure if that's because, as they raised it to their assistant superintendents and whatnot, if that discussion kind of stopped. And again, it may be a policy of the school district, not sure.
Thank you.
So, you know, it may be something that, you know, political discussion needs to happen.
Well, again, back in the old days, we used to do that, and it wasn't a problem. So it would be nice if we went, in this case, back to the old days, and did a little retro thing, where we don't have ball fields sitting next to ball fields, and tennis courts within throwing distance of tennis courts, and swimming pools that both entities assist with, that type of thing.
Agreed.
Thank you. Yeah, back to a little bit on these overall costs for things. Within the Parks and Recreation Department, the total being requested for capital improvement projects for parks and recreation, golf courses, all of that, is $46 million. That's a whole lot of money. Matter of fact, I think that's more money than the utilities are requesting. It's certainly more money than any other department is individually requesting. I get that parks and rec here in Boulder City are an important thing for the residents. We love our parks. We love being able to go and recreate. But again, I think we need to get, and look at these lists, and say what our priorities are, so that as we look at the numbers and the projects, we're able to make decisions that say, "Yes, that project needs to be on the list. We need to fund that." Whereas other projects, we should look at and say, "You know what? We can't afford it." And I know that's an unheard-of thing for government to say, but we only have 16,000 folks here in Boulder City to pay for these projects. So when you say, "Well, we can't afford it," we can't afford it. It's that simple.
If I could just make one comment, 30 million of that is the pool.
Well, I understand that, but...
I think just for clarification, I mean, it's a big piece of it.
I do understand, but even with the pool withdrawn, which was the 30 million, that still leaves $16 million. That's a chunk of change for everybody. I just think we, again, we need to be realistic in what we're including on our list here. The airport fund, you know, I'm not even sure what to say about that. It's an enterprise fund. It's supposed to support itself. Projects totaling over $28 million are on the list. We're just barely breaking even, and I know what the answer is. Don't worry, another government will come in and pay for it all, meaning the feds, the FAA. The other thing is, I question why we put these projects on here with the operation that we have. Is there something that's anticipated for the airport, in other words, substantial growth, that requires these things? And I know the airport director's only been here for about two weeks now, so...
He should have all the answers, right?
And he's right there, but I'm not going to call you up and ask you, because...
I could walk him up.
If you believe you have something you can contribute, please do. I'm just not wanting to put you on the spot, because I know you've only recently started your job.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say briefly that the airport is self-sustaining, and we have a variety of things we're looking at. We're looking at restructuring the capital improvement plan for the airport. Many of the items that are on there are based on safety requirements that the FAA does require, and they do pay for at 90% or better. So it's really a good money leverage whenever you do those type of grants. There's a variety of other things that we have going on down there, that I'm just getting a handle on right now, that you and the city council will be being briefed on here shortly. And we'll be looking forward to working with you and going forward on projects that are required.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If I just may add, the council, well, this, most of this council was not here when the airport master plan was presented. And in the airport master plan is an outlook of, you know, all of these particular capital projects, and that's why this is in this plan, is, in other words, to be able to potentially execute, if the council desires, those particular projects. The vast majority of them, as our new airport manager has, you know, stated is, it is being funded, if not 100%, almost 90% to 95% by the federal government. One of the things I will note is that I, it was said to me, you know, to make sure that I understood it, and it was an airport speak, is that one of the biggest capital projects in there is the building of a air traffic control tower. So it's building the tower, and then the federal government would pay the salaries of the individuals that would actually do the air traffic controlling. Our airport has more traffic than the Henderson Executive Airport on an annual basis. They have controlled airspace. They have an air traffic control tower. We do not.
Thank you. And again, my concern is, what is it that we're doing at the airport? What's the goal at the airport? Is it to increase traffic down there?
It is to ensure safety as much as we can. Again, I use just the example, which is...
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, as we do these projects, is the goal that a more dense use, a more frequent use of the airport, is that the goal, is that we want a busier airport?
No, it is not. We, the master plan has provided for upgrades to bring everything into current-day standards as far as safety and operations of the current facility. It does not look at any future additional growth to the airport.
And my understanding on the control tower was that the FAA recently changed their standards, because previously Boulder City did not qualify for one, and since that time, the FAA had changed their standards.
I think the standards that they changed was about the grant and how you qualify for the grant. It wasn't whether or not the size of the facility or the actual activity. That was my understanding, and I'm looking to Brock to make sure that I stated that correctly.
That's correct. It was roughly five years ago when they reevaluated their criteria that they used to establish the cutoff point for when they would fund an air traffic control tower. And it uses roughly 100 different metrics that they analyzed to come up with a ratio. Prior to them re-analyzing or reprioritizing that list, we were just underneath the qualification, and then once they reprioritized and redid their list, a lot of airports dropped out, and we shot up, based on our safety issues that were perceived to be in existence at the airport.
Thank you. Again, I get back to, you know, whether they're paying 90% or 95%, the last figures I've seen for the past couple of years is, we just break even on that fund. So even if it's 5% of $5 million, it doesn't sound like there's enough in the airport fund to do that. Unless, of course, everybody else in Boulder City decides they would love to pay for it.
No, actually, part of the overall plan that will be brought forward to the council is to actually look at the fees, structures that currently are in place. Many of those fees have not been increased in a number of years. And so those fees help to pay for the operations and maintenance and future investment into the infrastructure that we have there. And so those fees, if the council ultimately approves, that would be made available to help fund, you know, that 5% that we may need to provide upfront for capital investments.
And again, thank you for the clarification on that, but we still have the issue of, if we have it on our CIP now, that means that, yep, we're planning on that project, but we don't have the fee, new fee structure, or potential new fee structure in place at this time. So we're making a decision, and it's based on something where the money's not there right now.
Right. And so we identify if the money is there or not. This is a planning document. It's a five-year document. It does not guarantee any of the money is going to be available beyond year one. But if we do not put that on there, then, you know, you lose sight of what you're, are you looking at over the next five years. And not only does it allow the council to see potential projects, but also potential either funding and how we're going to manage the funding in the out-years, or it also, you know, allows for staff to see where the shortfalls are, to try to determine how and where we would find funding sources for future projects. If you do not put it on this planning document, then we kind of lose sight of that.
Well, it's possible, though, to have a document that would differentiate between the stuff we need to do and the stuff that may be sometime in the future. And I guess that's what I'm talking about, is having that differentiation, so that we know the things that we need to do. We've got the money to do it. We're able to do it. We know the timeframe to do it. And things that we don't have the money to do right now, we take another look at. But we have a list of these projects that we know we're going to fund, because when we look at these, and they're broken out in years of funding, that's saying, "Yep, go ahead. Get the money. Write the check for that. Get that money ready, and we're going to go ahead with it." So I think it's, again, information for the city council to come to a proper evaluation, and more importantly, information for the public, so they know, "This is what your city council is putting priorities on. This is what your city council..." This is what your city council wants to spend money on, and get feedback from them.
I just wanted to add a comment to that. I was going to say it earlier, but you were on a roll, so I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh, please.
In the book that you have that has each project, it also has a rating criteria score, and that is what we would use if we have to prioritize. And like the city manager stated, what we want to do in the, in the capital improvement five-year plan is make sure we just keep sight of all the things that potentially need to be done. And all we're asking the council to vote on is a tentative first year. All the others does not necessarily mean we're planning on doing them in those years. We're trying to plan our finances so that we can, you know, maximize the money and get the most things done. But when it comes right down to it, we can rate these projects based on whether it's safety or ADA requirements, so there's a whole scale that we use, which, which is explained in this document.
And I, thank you for that. I guess my experience has said to me that things like that get done, and then a couple of years down the road, somebody goes, well, it's been on the capital improvement project list, you, you've said you're going to do it. I, I'm just saying, when we get these things, we need to have more information, just as I had mentioned earlier with the StanTech study. We need to have that study in order to know what we should be placing the emphasis on. So I, I think it's important when we talk about things like the airport, and we see this, whatever the figure was, $28 million, that we have some idea, is that really what we want to do? Rather than saying, well, just put it on there, you know, just in case you want to do it, and then two or three years later, people say, well, you said you were going to do it, you've had it on there for years now. It's, it's a distinction. Might not be much of a distinction, but it's a distinction, and I've seen it done over and over in this town, where, ah, you said you were going to do it, now you have to do it.
Just to provide some historical perspective, because this had gone on many years ago, especially when budgets were, the budget was thin, and there had been criticism from not only the council but the community, because at the time, we were only looking at one year at a time. Not only did council request that we identify all projects that were needed for a five-year plan, even if they were unfunded, because not only does it help you make your future decisions, it could influence the, your, your, your future decisions, it influences the current decisions you may make today. So that is to give you a big whole picture of what is, like Diane said, is coming down the road. So as you know, just like today, you remove two projects, it's that easy. You have several opportunities throughout the year when you're reviewing these in a special meeting or at the budget time, that you have the opportunity to make changes, it's fluid. And so that's kind of where the history came from, because, you know, great improvement since Diane and her staff has come on board, but that had been a criticism for many, many years.
Well, and I understand that, and as I say, I, I saw something that somebody called a five-year plan one time. I, I think that's just basic management, is that you plan that far out. My concern is still, and I'll have to be honest with you, we've now kind of had the different explanations of, well, maybe you don't want to do it right now, but you should have it on there, versus, no, you need to be looking at the projects that do need to be done. I'm just saying, it, to my mind, it's a distinction that we should be a lot clearer about than what we are. What do we want at the airport? Do we want $28 million worth of improvements? Is that what we're looking for? Or should we be saying, you know what, operations may have exceeded the ability of that facility to function correctly, and look and say, you know what, folks, we're getting out over our skis on that project. We, we need to look at something other than putting more money into it. That's the distinction I'm looking at on these projects. Okay, I guess that ends that.
A comment to that.
Please.
And maybe what we need to do is change this, like we did with the land management plan, to a land management process, so that we can actually discuss things, and whether or not they're going to pan out or not, and not make this a plan, like this is the plan that we're going to be using. I think that's a distinction, maybe that you're just talking about, that we can have ideas out there that comes from staff, like these are the things, the projects that need to be out there, and then we can discuss them. But when you put them in a track, kind of like this, as a plan, then, yeah, it looks like, okay, this is what we're working towards funding something.
If I could just make a comment on that, we have to submit to the state a five-year plan each year, and it's got to follow certain parameters that the state requires.
Right. So before we submit it, though, that we could have a process of, like we're doing now, where we go through and talk about everything until it's ready to be funded. But those things that aren't funded, do those need to go towards the state?
They're part of what's submitted to the state, but there's no funding attached. Where there's no funding mentioned in this document, there's no funding sent to the state. It's, it's just the requirement of what we have to do.
And maybe we could get an evaluator, an explanation, a lay explanation of what the criteria in the state law are, because just to say, well, it's state law that you have to submit it? Well, I'm guessing there's no criteria in there that says that we have to include improvements at the airport. They're just saying you have to submit this in form of a capital improvement project list.
The airport is part of the city. It's an enterprise fund, but it's part of the city, so they'd want us to include that.
What I'm saying is, they're not saying that we have to submit something that says we're planning $28 million in improvements there. I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't, when we start saying that the state law requires, the state law requires we submit a list, but it doesn't have to be this list, it could be some other list.
I, I, I'm, I'm starting to get a little confused because...
Me too.
There's a number of documents that the council, in the past, and this current council, will be reviewing throughout the year that will affect this capital improvement program.
Yeah, I, I was just responding to, when we hear the statement, well, it's state law that you do that.
Well, the state law is...
Let's get an understanding of what that is.
The state law requires that the city submit a financial plan that includes a capital improvement program, and it does not necessarily equate to this binder. It's actually, it caps...
We submit the executive summary.
The executive summary. So it's not the whole binder. But I guess to get to, perhaps, what you were talking about, Mayor, is we have an airport master plan that identifies capital improvements. If we do not submit or place those in the five-year citywide capital improvement program, then it would be disingenuous to the community as a whole that we've, you know, have this master plan that the council has approved. Now, not this council, but the council has approved. Until this council, you know, revisits that plan and changes it, staff has to go with what is currently approved.
Oh, I understand. You're in the same place that we're in, that you have to have something to do, and we have to have something to evaluate.
I suppose what I would say, if the council has concerns about the airport and capital projects, or parks and the capital projects, then what we really need to do is visit the source documents, and you've heard that term before, that we use to determine and make those recommendations to the council, that these are projects that should go into five-year, you know, all the potential projects. Every municipality has this, and I will pretty much say that most, if not all municipalities, have a deficit over the five years, because they don't have enough revenues that they generate to pay for all the capital improvement projects. And there is a prioritization, as Mayor, as you pointed out, that does occur, and that prioritization really, at the end of the day, comes down to two or three real significant variables. Number one is money. If the money is there for a particular project, say, out of the general fund, and the council decides that's the number one priority for whatever the reasons are, that will get funded in year one. Everything else will fall either into year two, three, four, or five, or what have you. If all of a sudden, a project that is determined to be grant-funded comes forward, the grant dollars come forward, that may be the number one project that the council decides to move forward on this year versus in year three, when it was, you know, well, we have to wait and see. But now, all of a sudden, if, say, the FAA, you know, has a lot of money, and they want to do three, two-thirds of those projects, all of a sudden, that will be something that potentially the council could say, we want to move forward on that first, versus, because, you know, it was listed in year four, now we want to move it up to year one, because the funding is now available, and it makes sense. If the council approves and continues to say that the airport master plan is what we're going to utilize from the policy perspective, that helps staff determine what are the needs that we need to plan for, based on the council's policies that come through those plans in years one, two, three, four, and five, because we can't fund everything in year one, and that's why we try to manage this over a five-year plan. And even a five-year plan does not cover all of the needs that we have, whether it's airport, parks, utilities, facilities, all those kinds of things. So we're trying, we try to put together, as best as we can, a five-year plan. That doesn't mean that these will absolutely get done. What that means is that in year one, when you finally approve the budget at the, within the last two weeks of May, because that's what is required, very specifically in the NRSs, that will fund year one of this five-year plan. Keeping in mind that next year, when we do this exercise again, because we will do it every single year, years two through five, it could change, because funding sources, availability of grants, you know, all sorts of different variables that will change this. Some things will be added, some things will be taken away, just like, you know, today, the council, you know, said, you know, there's a couple of projects that you just don't see a need, and maybe the facility study may invalidate the council's current, you know, vote on, say, the community center.
Well, again, I, I appreciate that explanation. I think that's important for not just the council to have reiterated, but for the public as well. And I guess that's where I'm going with this, and we've already, several of us have already stated it. We're being asked to make evaluations and make decisions without these reports that are yet to be completed, or have been completed but never reviewed by a majority of this council. That's the point I'm trying to make. So maybe it would be worthwhile to have that airport study circulated among the council, so that when we look at a $28 million expense, folks understand it and understand what was being discussed at that time. You know, I, I believe, I know that when I reviewed the questions that Councilwoman Folded asked, there was a question in there about this multipurpose public safety facility. It's a fire station, that, that's what was being talked about when that airport study was done. Maybe that's not something that the other council members are aware of, and maybe that's not something that we favor anymore, is spending that kind of money to put something just a mile and a half, two miles away from the existing fire station. So those are the types of things that I'm referring to, that when we look at this, we may not have the information. That makes me very uncomfortable, when we don't have the information, yet we're being asked to go ahead and put these on the list. That's the point I'm trying to make, no more, no less.
Maybe this is restating the obvious for me, or a sense of confusion. I'm under the impression that we are talking today about the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan Project List, that everything else is information. I mean, that's how I looked at it, and maybe I didn't look at it correctly, but, so that we're not, my impression is, we're not re-evaluating the five-year plan. My impression was, you know, certainly there are things like taking the demolition off the building, but in reality, that's something that comes from the evaluation of a five-year plan, and that today, what we're looking at is the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan, the, the list that includes nothing for the airport, that...
And, and you are correct, because even though this is a five-year plan, part of, in order to assist the council in making the ultimate decision of moving forward or not, is that there are projects that are multi-year projects, that you do design in year one, you do construction in year two, possibly in year three, and you need to see the impact of the multi-year funding needs in order to make sure that project is completed. Some projects can be all done in the first year, some projects take two or three years to do. And even though, say, for example, I'll use the swimming pool. The swimming pool says 30 million, but you notice that in year one, two, three, four, or five, it doesn't have any number, because currently, right now, we don't know if that project's going to go or not. But we do know that there is an ad hoc committee that is looking at, potentially making recommendations to the council, as to whether or not that project needs to go forward. Should it go forward, what you will see ultimately in the CIP is, you're going to have design, that design is actually going to take probably more than a year, and then you'll have construction that typically takes at least minimum of 12 months, if not 18 months or so, and then kind of close down. So you'll see a multi-year approach on how we fund, and we, you know, show the project in here. Early on today, you did hear where, you know, oh, certain figures didn't seem to jive. That's because the project actually started a year or two ago. And, you know, what you're seeing now is, you're approving for 2021, that year's portion of the expenditure of that project that was, you know, done two years ago. So you, it is true that what you're doing is, you're looking very specifically as year 2021, which is next fiscal year, so that when, when it comes to you for final approval in May, you're going to be authorizing the expenditure of funds for projects identified for year 2021. We just don't want you to lose sight of potentially 2022 and beyond.
Well, I, let, let me just clarify something, because again, I, I think my level of confusion is increasing that. The state law that was referred to earlier is one of the criteria, to submit only one year of the capital improvement project?
When I submitted it last year, I submitted the five-year plan.
Okay.
But they're not expecting us to build all these things, they want to see the plan, so that's what we send them.
Okay, so we are discussing something other than one year, and what will happen in May is, not the capital improvement project list, but the budget. And the budget is what will say, this is what we intend to spend this year.
There are two budgets that you will approve. You will approve the budget for the capital improvement project, formally approved. Right now, we're looking for the tentative approval, so that we know that those monies are going to be set aside and are not available for anything else.
Well, I guess, guess what I'm getting at, is, on the one hand, we're being told, you know, this discussion involves five years, and on the other hand, the question that Councilwoman Bridges just asked was, oh, that's all a waste of time, you shouldn't be talking about anything except this year. So I'm not sure...
I, I, I don't think that's what she said. She said that what you're really looking at to approve and to focus on is the projects for 2021. The rest of the years is information for the council, so that you can understand what we are potentially looking at further down the road.
Okay, and perhaps then, what might help all of us then, is to get a definition within that state law of what this capital improvement plan is, so that we'll know what's required. Maybe that would be helpful. Well, let's just reference the NRS then, and we'll take it from there on our own, if we're interested. Maybe we can go that route with it.
Well, you can do the minimum, which is the, whatever the NRS says, or...
No, just reference the NRS, and we'll, we'll try and get a better understanding.
We could do what the council wishes to see, which is a much more robust product, and I think the council is due a much more robust product.
Okay.
Which is what's being presented.
Again, this all relates, the, the conversation over, I don't know, the past 20 minutes related to a statement that was made, that it's state law, it's required by... related to a statement that was made, that it's state law, it's required by state law. I believe that's what all of this was related to, was a statement, this is required by state law. But I'm at the end of my comments, I don't know if Councilwoman Bridges had any other comments or questions, or if there are any other council members that do.
If I could just clarify one thing.
I think we're going to have to probably answer, seek our own answers on this.
No, what I just wanted to say is, in the executive summary, on the last page, is the schedule for adoption, and it cites the NRS statute in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I only had one more. I know there was a list of numbers that don't add up, and I made, and I'm back to looking at the five-year plan, that that grand total of 203,277. How far back do those numbers go? So are there, might there have been projects started, say, in 2016, that were funded for five years, where money has already been spent, and that is included on here? I'm just curious, where was there, is there like an absolute zero, if you started adding up all the totals, that you got to 203,277?
So the project total included fiscal year 20, they don't go earlier than that?
Okay, so if you, you take the project costs of the, just the 2020.
And then going forward, and some go beyond 2025, and that's why they don't also add up?
Right, because they're not funded, or whatever. Okay, so there is, there's 2020 is the...
Is the historical?
Zero.
Zero, yeah.
Okay, and, but it could go forward to infinity, or whatever the desired time is, until it's taken off, or whatever. But there is a good reason why those numbers are not totaled, are not accessible right there. They've either been spent, or there's some future time where they may or may not be spent. Okay.
Would it be possible, then, to clear that up by showing a beginning balance and an ending balance, or a beginning commitment and an ending commitment, instead of just having these spreadsheet-like documents that don't add up? Because they generate questions. They generate questions from me, they generated questions from people speaking in public comment, they generate questions from citizens that say, hey, I looked at that, and it doesn't add up.
Mayor, you asked, I think it's something similar to when we were talking about rates, had it broke out, say, the electric division, it's starting at $10 million. We have X, Y, and Z projects that bring it down to 3 million, but we plan on this much revenue. Would you like to see basically five years of that, what the starting balance is, the proposed projects, ending balance, which would be the starting balance of next year, taking off the projects, is that what you're, would you like to see that?
Well, I, you know, I would like to see some clarity, if that's how you think you can bring the clarity to it. You know, I'd certainly be willing to look at any format that you have, but where we have, you know, I don't want to use the wrong word, but the numbers simply don't add up. So if there's a reason that you have projects that were already pending, let's show that number. If you have projects that had money committed and not spent, let's show that number. But at some point, there should be some presentation that everything adds up on.
That makes sense.
If I could just make one more comment on that. Last year was our first attempt at creating the executive summary for the capital improvement, and as soon as we got it done, we started, you know, thinking of things to do to improve it. So we did add a section in this year's that says recently completed and ongoing projects, which address prior year projects. We're still trying to, every time we, we address this booklet, we're trying to make it easier, more user-friendly, clearer, so we'll take your comments into consideration, but I think we're going to have to do a little research to see how we could possibly, you know, not, we don't want to turn this into a tree killer, we want it to be a succinct document. So we will look at ways to improve it and enhance it.
And I'm not hoping for a voluminous document, that's not, I don't think that's what I described. What I described was a presentation where we can see all of that, in that when you add up columns, and you add up rows, that things add up.
Yes, and the other thing, I know it's getting kind of late, but the other thing we're working on is the transparency software, which at some point, we expect to have a link that would go into ongoing projects, and provide, especially with special interest projects, people could go in and look and see where it started, what's been spent, what's planned, when it'll end, things like that.
And I, again, I think that will be, I agree with you, that will be a great step Anyone else?
I just want to state that the steps coming up is, we were planning on bringing this back on November 12th, to discuss, and for your approval, tentative approval.
Right. Thank you.
And again, I just want to mention to the council, and reemphasize, this is a tentative approval, and all this is meant to do, really, is for staff to be able to start building the operations and maintenance budget, which really, so that we know, you know, at least the tentative intentions of the council is to set aside those monies specifically for year 2021, so we know to set those monies aside for the projects that are tentatively approved, and, and then we can work on the O and M's, you know, portion in the winter and the spring, and then both projects, or both budgets will be brought forward to the council during the budget season, the operations budget, for further discussion, and then ultimately, the final approval of both the capital projects, or the capital budget, as well as the operations and maintenance budget, will occur at the, you know, somewhere between the last two weeks of May.
May 26th.
May 26th.
And the calendar also shows all the meetings scheduled, so you can mark your calendar accordingly. So we'll be visiting each other a lot.
I have big gold stars on my calendar already.
Good, good. We look forward to going through this.
All right, again, thank you. You know, the, well, there is no comparison between this and a budget from, let's say, 10 years ago, okay? This is a very good product, I think it's helping to inform the public. We still have a little ways to go, but this is a high level of work, I really do appreciate that. All right, our final public comment period then, anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Sinaiakin?
I've made comments about some of the work that staff has done recently, and I want to report that I had a fantastic experience with three people from Public Works a few days ago, in replacing a bad line behind, on my property, conducting electricity. They were efficient, they came in, they did the job, and they left. So that was, that was good news. On this, I'm more concerned about this process than I was when I came in. For the mayor of Boulder City to be footing numbers and adding up things like that, that's not in your job description, nor were a lot of the comments that were made. I hope you didn't misconstrue, this council is certainly qualified to make general comments. I don't feel that the council is qualified to go into the nuts and bolts of accounting any more than the council is qualified to install a transformer out in the field. It's not your job. I support you, and I know that you've made very good comments on a scope and general direction, but I don't feel that, from an accounting point of view, that this is your job, to be adding up numbers on a budget like this at a meeting, and you've been most kind. Jeff Bezos or Warren Buffett would not have been so kind. There are layers beneath this that haven't come up. There are projections in how things were calculated, that are going to go out in time, and they're going to be problematic. You can't plug in a 5% slot figure into the rate of inflation that's going to project out and have that be meaningful, because it's going to bump projects that you want. There's going to be a lot of stuff bumped unnecessarily because of the calculations that are in that budget, and you alluded to that. I called it an $87 million hole that's going to be problematic, and how you've scheduled out these projects, and you were much more diplomatic than that. So my feeling is, and I go back to it, if you're not going to appoint a consultant, you have an ad hoc committee on the pool, on electric, you have the CDAC committee, or the planning commission, you have many advisory commissions, and a lot of your time, including the past two hours, could be saved by having people like Mr. Volz and other people that are qualified to come in, and they can foot the numbers that staff isn't able to add up properly. So I would recommend, if you're not going to hire somebody to go through all of this, that you bring in people, you have no idea how qualified Mr. Volz is, I've spent time talking with him, and there's other people that have financial backgrounds here. So I'll leave it with that, but there are layers that you didn't touch on, that are the machinery of this, that are not, to me, handled well, and they explode out exponentially as you go out in time. A small snowball, as it rolls downhill, becomes a huge snowball, that's going to bump other projects that you might really want to do. I applaud Councilwoman Folded, there's no need to build a convention center. What you're talking about for 5 million is the Smith Center. That's what you can build for 5 million, because I was brought here to build it, and that was built at 1.7 million back in 1989, and that building was meant to be expandable, and you could have the same attendance inside that building as you would in your 5 million dollar convention center. I've talked to more people on the highway and downtown concerning the drop in traffic and the effect on their businesses. About a year and a half ago, I did a study, I worked with Jill for about 30 hours, I did a video that's on YouTube, that's an hour, it's under my name, Neil, N-E-A-L, Sinaiakin, S-I-N-I-A-K-I-N, called Bypass Part Two, and I spent an hour going through things that you might want to visit. It addresses how the effect of the drop in traffic is, and I talked to someone last night, their business has a 20% drop in traffic, I talked to another business that has a 40% drop in volume, I talked to people in downtown that are affected, and they aren't the people that have been quizzed on what the effect of the bypass is. It's been, as I said before, cherry picked, that the coffee cup and the Southwest diner aren't the best examples of the totality of it. The antique businesses down, the hardware stores are down, the fast food is down, and you could actually make money by doing certain things and benefiting the community. You have the RDA funds that we support, you have grant money that we do, and it could be a moneymaker for you to help the businesses. I can go into it another time, but I'll just say in closing, McDonald's business is 85% pass-through traffic. If they have a 50% drop in the pass-through traffic, the 85%, and have the 15% left, that brings their business down to 67% by simple mathematics, and for McDonald's to be at 67%, that's not good, and there's other people that are worse. If you want to catch the video, it's on YouTube, under my name, and I'll talk to more people, because they've asked me if I would say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, again, for the record, Red Volz, I'm very troubled by some of the justifications I've heard tonight from city staff. One of the simple solutions for making a spreadsheet understandable and logical is simply to add one new column that would say what the spent money is, assuming we can figure that out, and then the columns and the rows should total up correctly. So I'd like to suggest that that be done in whatever iteration is going to be made of this document. The pages 58 through 61 in the support materials actually did add future years where there was going to be new expense, and so that helped, but we still don't know how much has been spent, and we can't just presume that it is spent money and not an error. Regarding the city hall improvements, I'm very troubled by giving a city staff a blank check to just do whatever improvements they want to do. We don't need a one-stop permitting center in the construction costs that go with that. We don't need new furniture, we don't need a lot of other things, none of which have been identified even on a draft basis, and yet, this $1.5 million was put into the capital improvement budget. It makes no sense at all. Let's see what the consultant comes up with, and then we can figure out what we need to do. Regarding the utility function, we still have $21 million of unreconciled projects that have been budgeted supposedly, and I'd like to suggest a rather drastic solution to this. Until we get the $21 million reconciled, we don't approve any new projects for fiscal year 2021. So that would save us $10 million right there. Yes, we may have to do them at some point in the future, but we need to have a clear and accurate project counting of what is in process right now, and after two attempts, we still don't have it. One of the biggest absence points in this project is, there is absolutely nothing for the animal shelter. And for any of you who were here and experienced what happened a couple of administrations ago, it was shocking, the way that the animals of this town were treated, and were put to death unrealistically and unnecessarily. And they need kennels, they're 11 years old, as old as the facility, they also need security upgrades, and I see not a single nickel in here for them, and that's really appalling for a town that prides itself on being animal friendly. We also need to quantify demand for new capital improvement projects, and none of that has been demonstrated in this document so far. And I'll use the deleted soccer fields as a great example. To suggest that we should spend $400,000 for five to 10 tournaments a year, plus the ongoing maintenance costs, is just irresponsible. That's all you can define it as. I would also be curious to know how much we're in terror there would be on school lands if they were opened up to the city, and we don't staff most of our city parks on any basis, so why should the school district need to have people from their organization present? So that would be something, if you have a conversation with CCSD, to bring up. And my final point is, if all the project costs are paid 90% by federal taxpayers, who happen to also be Boulder City taxpayers, and 10% of that 28 million is still $2.8 million from local taxpayers, that's a lot of money. And when you look at the projects from the airport, and I understand they're not in 2021 fiscal year, but you cannot say that they are safety-related when they're expanding, relocating, and remodeling the administrative offices for $806,000, eight and five, and the South Apron and Access Road, that's not a safety issue, that's a nice-to-have, that's 16, over $16 million. So over half of that $28 million does not fall into the safety category, and I really have a problem with it being categorized that way, just like it was categorized here at city hall, that we should spend one and a half million on health and safety improvements. This building is almost 90 years old, it's in pretty good shape, the tuck pointing's been done, the air conditioning's in good shape, the roof's been repaired and replaced, the windows have been replaced, it may not be glitzy like Las Vegas, but it's serviceable. And yes, we may need to do ADA retrofits, but we don't need to do a lot of other nice-to-have things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment then. Again, staff, thank you very much. Couldn't have spent a better weekend than with 327 pages to review, but with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I guess I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, 8 o'clock, right? Yeah.
So everything, everything, you have, except one more question.
Yeah.
Of course, right?
He was more focusing on just those three.
Yeah, exactly, yep.